Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call together, excuse me, together the November 1st, 2017 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And I would like to ask if you would join us in a moment of silence, please. Before we get into our agenda, I would like to welcome Kay Dawson from the Red Bud District, who's joined us, and we're delighted to have her. She has come up through one of our committees, and I think it's just delightful. Thank you. Let's see, the agenda has got no changes.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we've got September the 6th meeting minutes.
Move to accept the notice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Time for committee reports. Let's take a look. We have, Mr. Oates is going to speak with us a little bit from the Frederick Water Meeting.
Yes, ma'am. The board directors met on October 17, 2017. I had a few items on the agenda. The first was the board approved their annual audit for the year ending June 30, 2017. Representatives from Brown Edwards presented the results of their fiscal year 2017 financial audit of Frederick Water. They explained that the financial report expressed an unmodified opinion with no major issues, and that Frederick Water staff properly accounted for all transactions and was very thorough. Second item was the Frederick Board heard an update on the Opeckin Water Supply Plan. Efforts to advance the Opeckin Water Supply Plan, the joint permit application to withdraw water from the Opeckin Creek has been submitted to required state agencies. AECom and PC Construction, the design-build team continues to develop the engineered drawings for the creek intake, water lines, water treatment plant. The designs and cost estimates should be within 30 percent by mid-November. Preliminary costs are nearing $30 million and include all improvements necessary to construct and operate the new water facility, as well as baseball fields. Features include the ability to treat 8 million gallons a day, an advanced water treatment system, including UV lighting, system redundancy to assure the facility will produce high-quality drinking water. The program also includes $2 to $3 million in the ball field construction to replace the ball fields at Clearbrook Park. As the design process advances over the next few months, the cost estimates will continue to be refined. Most importantly, this new plant will actually save Frederick Water customers in monthly expenses, as payments to carments will be eliminated. Operations report for September 2017, the rainfall for the month was an inch and a half. Previously, it was three inches for a 12-month average of 2.8. And the quarries at Stevens City are continuing to recover, because we've been buying more water from Winchester to allow Stevens City's quarries to recharge. So, we've been drawing roughly about a million and a half gallons a day for the last several months, actually almost a year. So, it's finally having some good results. And with the Opeckin Water Supply, that'll give us multiple water sources, so that we can give our quarries and wells chances to rebound over time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And Mr. Kevin Kenny is going to help us with both Transportation Committee and Development DRCRC Committee reports.
I'll start with the DRCRC. Since we didn't meet in October for the Planning Commission, our September 28 meeting, we had two items on the agenda, to look into solar botake energy facilities, to get into our RA zoning district. We also had another second item for discussion, was for chicken coops to be allowed in the RP Residential Performance Zoning District. The one for the photobotake moved on to Planning Commission. The October 26 meeting, the chicken coop came back before us, and we, the committee did not support moving this forward to Planning Commission. Onto transportation. We've had two meetings since we last met. Due to time constraints, I won't go into all the details, because there's over 12 items on the meeting that was held on September 25. The agenda was the Kernstown Limited Access Break. It was requested for support, request for revenue sharing. That moved forward. Smart Scale Program update from Mr. John Bishop. Junior Association of Counties Legislative Product Priorities was on the list. Transportation Partnership Opportunity Funds Agreement Execution and Applications. Request for four-way stop intersection of Dragonfly Way and 11 Moons Place. Announcement of the Fall Transportation Forum Discussion. Bee Trains 2040 Study. Valley Mill Road Revenue Sharing Fund Transfer. County Project Updates, and then the upcoming agenda items. Moving on to the October 26 meeting, October 30 meeting, I'm sorry, of the Transportation Committee, we had five, six items on the agenda. We got an update from Mr. John Bishop for the Capital Improvement Program. We had our Eastern Road Plan Update for the fundings, our county project updates, our upcoming agendas, and we also had a secondary funds transfer that was discussed and moved forward also.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all the work. Let's see here now. We are delighted to have Dr. Fayle here from the City of Winchester. Planning?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. See, you have a large agenda. I'll be as brief as possible. At the September 19 meeting of the Winchester Planning Commission, there was a single item, TA 17-485, an ordinance to amend and reenact Sections 18-8 and Article 23 of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to signs. That was discussed. The public hearing was left open, and no action was taken at that time. It was tabled to the next month. October 17, we reconvened. Public hearings were held for TA 17-561, which was an ordinance to amend Article 7 of the zoning ordinance to allow addition of extended state lodging as a conditional use in the RB1 District. That was sent forward with a positive recommendation to City Council. CU 17-576 and CU 17-578 were requests of a single individual to, for a conditional use permit to establish a two-family dwelling at 386 and 388 Charles Street. These are in the HR1 District. Both were sent forward with a positive recommendation to City Council. TA 17-485 was reconsidered, and the public hearing closed, and that was sent forward with a positive recommendation on a 5 to 2 vote to City Council. That was the ordinance considered in September regarding signs. The new business was, there was a motion for, to, forward to City Council, RAW 17-584, which was an ordinance to vacate and convey a variable public, variable with public alley running north and south between Woodstock Lane and a public alley running along the rear of 686 Woodstock Lane. That was also sent forward with a positive recommendation to City Council. And lastly, TA 17-561 was an ordinance amending Article 7 of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to addition of extended state lodging as a conditional use in RB1. And that concludes my report, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for being with us. Mr. Dunn?
Madam Chair. The Board of Supervisors met on October 25. At that time, they had an update on the Tevis Bridge over I-81. They had an update on the Airport Road Extension. There was no votes, it was just an update. And then the board did vote to appoint Kay Dawson to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from the two larger items tonight, as I'm working for or around both projects for neighbors and such. So, I'm going to recuse myself at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to talk a little bit. It's great to look out and see so many people. Believe me, we've had, if you will, the kind of down times for Planning Commission. So, this is great, and we're delighted that you're here. We are going to do something a little bit different tonight, which we think will help us all, and that is, on the beginning of the, the beginning of what we're doing, is we've got two public hearings. Two public hearings. Do all of you have, or at least most of you, have a copy of the agenda, so that you can come with me? Okay. We have two public hearings, which means that people who want to speak for this or against this are heard, and they're heard very specifically in a specific time on the agenda. The four other items that we have, we've got action items, and that's action on the CUP. We have got Capital Improvement Plan, capital projects. We've got a Master Development Plan for Abrams Chase, and we've got Annual Review Bylaws and Responsibilities for this commission. The reason that I'm telling you this is the way we treat public, public input is different for those two types of things. And so, what we're going to do is start off with what is known in the, on our, if you will, on our agenda, in the citizen comment portion. So, just think about it this way. People who are talking about the public hearing in the first two items, they are going to come along at the end. And so, what we're going to do is to ask people who have indicated interest in any of the four others to speak with us during the public comment portion. So, that's a long way around. And you saw, did you see up here? We're using the Board of Supervisors' timing. And so, in order for you all to have the time to respond and to list, take a peek at that. And as you come up to the podium here, we generally don't use it, but it's what the Board of Supervisors uses, and if it's good enough for the board, it's good enough for us, too. And so, what that'll be is your three-minute time slot to give us the information that you have. Okay? Are we sort of set? We'll get used to it. Okay. I do want to share with you that what I'll be doing is to identify those four items, and I would suggest for since, that we divide them up, and if there are no people interested in Tab G on the Annual Review of Bylaws, and there shouldn't be, then, at least, I don't think so. Anyway, if you're interested in our bylaws, why don't you come forward, and if you make any conversation about those, we'd be happy to. Seeing none, we'll close, we'll close that one off. The next one is the Master Development Plan for Abrams Chase, and that is a project that should be looked at with meeting the requirements of the, of the, the development plans. Okay, there's no public hearing required there. Tab B is Capital Improvement Plan. That's the capital projects for counties as part of the comprehensive plan. There is no public hearing for that. Does anyone want to talk to us about the comprehensive plan? I mean, excuse me, about the capital improvement plan? Anyone? Well, then, I think we're up to the items that are probably of most interest, and that is the action on, and that would be on the action on the CUP. And we put up on the, on the wall over there, the number of people who've communicated to us regarding this conditional use permit since our Planning Commission meeting. And I was told that there were 25 of you who spoke about this after our meeting, after the public hearing was closed. I think also that there were 11 people at that original meeting when we had our public hearing. That public hearing was closed at the end of that meeting. So, there were a number of people who have communicated to us, and we, there are a number of people who have, have spoken to us. I just bring that up to know, to tell you that, yes, we heard you, and we want to clean up anything perhaps that we haven't collected. So, with that, we're going to start with the, if you will, the green timer, and if there's anyone who would like to come up and speak to us regarding this action on the CUP, if you'll come up and give us your name, please. Magisterial District.
Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Greg Miller. I reside at 388 Woodchuck Lane in the Back Creek District. And I oppose the conditional use permit. I did speak at the last meeting about the noise issue. The reason I wanted to say something tonight is because on Saturday, October 21, my wife and I came home, and there was a wedding event on our road, and it was about a quarter mile away. When we pulled into our driveway, it was as though the speakers were sitting in our driveway. And so, we couldn't see where it was coming from. I drove down the road, found out about how far away it was, and it was about a quarter of a mile away. And then I drove from there over to Rocky Keplinger's house, which is about another half a mile away, to see if the noise was carrying that far, and it was. And I talked to him later, and he said he could hear it from inside of his house, as could I quite well. And I thought to myself, do I want this every weekend in the summer? And that's what an event center would, noise, that's how it carries in our, in our neighborhood. And where the events center is located is just over a hill from us. There's no, there are no trees, there are no, there's no barrier to sound there whatsoever. And so, I just wanted to bring that to our attention. We had an event that we don't mind if it's just, you know, once in a while, but we're talking about something that's going to be a regular event in our neighborhood, and it will certainly destroy the peaceful weekends in our residential neighborhood. And I also share the same concerns of the others that are speaking against this event, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak with us?
Hi. My name's Judy Malone, and I am from the Back Creek Magisterial District. And I represent myself and my tenants, who have expressed their concerns against the CUP and Number 07-17. Mrs. Shulyn wants to be a good neighbor, is what she keeps reminding us and telling us. However, the property located behind my house is a big field that is in dire need of mowing. I thought maybe this property was supposed to have bid for farm use, or to graze cattle, or whatever, but nothing has been done to this property since January. And I thought maybe they were gonna bail hay or something. Nothing has been done. And I was, I don't really know how to express this, because I feel sure that if this event passes, that measures will be taken to see all that this property is cleaned and pleasing to the public eye. But if this does not pass, then what do we do then? It's still, something still needs to be done to that property. And I bear no ill will toward Mrs. Shulyn, and have no animosity toward her endeavor to build an event center on Berwick's Lane. And that being said, I would feel the same toward anyone. If anyone wanted to try this, go for it, but I'm not, you know, I'm not in favor of it. And I share the same concerns as everyone else who has spoken, and I am against the event center in this small community. Thank you.
Next.
Madam Chairman, Planning Commission, I'm Rocky Keplinger. Me and my wife live at 218 Woodchuck Lane in the Back Creek Magisterial District. We've lived on Woodchuck Lane since 1976, 41 years, and we consider this to be our community. I do appreciate the planning staff working with Ms. Shulyn to relocate the traffic beside my house. That was an issue that I had, and now the traffic's going in front of the house. But in this relocation, it's still not taking care of the community's number-one concern, which is traffic on Woodchuck Lane. So, when we look at her permit for conditional use, and we look at what she's proposing, it's nothing more than a commercial building looking like a barn sitting on agricultural land for rent by different companies and other things for this. So, it's a commercial building for rent. So, I retroced to her back in August, and had my concerns and stuff with Ms. Shulyn. And one of her answers when I was talking about if the people are rowdy and stuff, is that you'll be more than welcome to call or text me if my renters are doing something wrong. So, that's telling me that this building's probably gonna be unsupervised, or she's not gonna have a manager, or she won't be there herself. That does concern me, that if you do pass it, who's gonna monitor this building? And that's in y'all's file, if you look down some of the emails that were shared. I also know that if this event center is approved, there's absolutely nothing that the county can do to stop her from building five-acre lots and have the event center. So, we could have an event center and 20 homes on five-acre lots. That's by your ordinances. And we'd have the traffic from the event center and the residential area. Plus, in the history of over 30 years of conditional use permits in Frederick County, you've only pulled one. So, whatever happens tonight, if it comes or goes, we know we're living with it. Yes, our community has three businesses, a woodcutting mill operation, logging operation, a quarry, and a repair business. All those businesses operate normal working hours and not weekends, when our families and community members are trying to relax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Matt Kiefer. I live at 148 Woodchuck Lane in Back Creek District. I'm opposed to this event center because of the amount of traffic it's gonna produce by my residents, as well as the other homes on the stretch of Woodchuck Lane that are gonna be affected by this event center. From residents, from the entrance of Woodchuck Lane, around her road to Berwick's Lane, there are nine children that live there, 13 years of age to 6 years of age, three of which are mine. Most of my opposition to this event center is based on the safety concerns for the children of this road, that the increase in traffic will affect. If I understand this permit correctly, the event center would primarily be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, holding wedding events, whatnot. The children who are growing up on this quiet stretch of roads spend most of their free time outside, enjoying nature, playing together. They have active outdoor lifestyle. Most of them end up playing in my yard. They will be directly increased, the safety, by having this event center. I am an employee with the county. I work for the Sheriff's Office. I'm well-versed in how alcohol affects people. I see effects on alcohol on a daily basis, my duties on drivers, as well as other incidents that I deal with. This event center will increase the amount of impaired drivers on Woodchuck Lane, which will endanger the lives of the children who call this quiet road the home. I don't want to have an impaired driver take the life of someone on the road, especially one of the children, especially my own child. I don't want that to affect our daily lifestyle. Statistics show that a person has driven typically 87 times intoxicated before they are arrested for DUI. This county is at 137 DUI arrests this year to date. If you multiply that number by 87, you'll quickly see how many people are impaired on our county roads daily and have not yet been caught. This event center will concentrate on impaired drivers by our homes on Woodchuck Lane and distribute them around the county, endangering many lives as they try to drive home from the event center. As I mentioned previously, I'm a county employee of the Sheriff's Office. With the world the way it is concerning my employment, I'm concerned having outsiders pass by the residence and seeing my county vehicle, and taking notes on my whereabouts, as well as my family's whereabouts. We receive numerous emails weekly, warning on people who are targeting law enforcement, as well as our people and our family, and simply based on my profession. I don't want to see people from outside the county or the area passing by my residents for safety concern of my family. Woodchuck Lane is a narrow, dead-end road that only has local traffic on it. The event center is planned to have a maximum capacity of 280 people. If you calculate that, two people per vehicle, 140 cars using the roadway, that's gonna affect immensely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the next person like to speak, please? Yes?
Madam Chairman, Planning Commission. Thank you for the time this evening. My name is Rick Lynch. My wife and I reside at 873 Round Hill Road, Back Creek District. Our family has resided there since 1985, April 1985. While in close proximity to Winchester, we have chosen the community to raise our children based on the rural setting and the agricultural-based zoning. This is a quiet, peaceful neighborhood with stable residential traffic flow, compatible to enjoyable outdoor activity. We previously addressed five major concerns for negative impact via email Monday. But I would like to present facts regarding event centers that already exist in close proximity to our community, approximately one and a half miles. We have newly, newly constructed Round Hill Event Center that has a capacity of 300, located at 141 Spinning Wheel Lane in Winchester. We have the Round Hill Ruoritan Club, located at 164 Porthouse Road, with a capacity of 80 to 100. We have the Cloverdale Barn, that is located at 2368 Cedar Creek Grade, 1.7 miles from Route 37, which boasts of weddings, birthdays, baptisms, graduations, reunions, rehearsals, company picnics, fundraisers, and anniversaries. They have won a couple's choice awards for four years running. We have the Museum of the Shandau Valley, address at 901 Amherst Street, which also boasts of a lot of green space and event activities that are open, available there, and also the Glen Burney Gardens. Estimated seating there could be as much as 500. They have open green space. We have the Courtyard Marriott, 300 Marriott Drive, which has a conference center. I haven't been able to get much information on that. Also, Amherst Funeral Home has an event center, which is currently used related to funerals, but has a capacity of 140, and has offered prices for, for parties that they serve there. So, in light of that, I would just like to say that this, another event center in our area is not needed, and would serve as a detriment to the Round Hill residential community. And I am, we are opposed to the conditional use permit 07-17 as such, and we would be in agreeance with all comments that have been made regarding that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Barbara Singh-Haz, and I reside at 775 Round Hill Road in the Back Creek District. And I am also opposed to the event center. First of all, I'd like to know who we're actually dealing with. The permit that you have presented to you says that the owners are Mr. and Mrs. Boyd. I went to the Frederick County office today and got a copy of the deed. It is owned by Regalo LLC, which they are member managers of. The partnership, because there's more than one person in this LLC, owns this property. The Boyd's don't. The property has not been maintained, and just as a matter of sidebar, Regalo, as definition in the Webster's Dictionary, means gift, bonus, or treat, especially an offering of superior food or drink, which tells me they have no intention to farm this property. Their sole purpose in buying this property was to do this event center. The property has been unmaintained. As the lady earlier said, there's been no tractors on this property since January, and they claim to have planted grass. I have pictures in front of my house that shows that the weeds are two feet tall. They've never been mowed, no hay's been made, no animals are grazing, nothing's going on there. There may be some cows and a horse on the property, but they do not belong to the Boyd's. They are rented property for grazing these animals. I have copies of everything here. I would like to note, does Regalo own any farming equipment? The LLC was set up two weeks prior to the property being closed on. It was established the 6th of January 2017, and the deeds were recorded on January 20. And I have a copy of the deed and the deed of trust in the name of Regalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us?
My name is Stephanie Stanifer, and my home is at 109 Woodchuck Lane in the Back Creek District. You've heard several of my neighbors speak to the impacts of CUP 07-17. You've heard several of my neighbors speak to the impacts of CUP 07-17, the impact on our community, our homes, and our lives. We have to live with this decision, and it cannot be taken lightly and without considering complete and correct information. There are too many unanswered questions and far too little documentation to support this application at this time. We need a full V dot traffic impact study of the measurable impacts, not only on Round Hill Road, but also Woodchuck Lane. Most importantly, the safety of our families on both roads need to be a primary concern. We need to know the best estimated impact from the engineers, not opinions. We need an accurate application to consider. There are too many inaccuracies in the current documentation. Among them, staff indicates 1,300 feet to the nearest residence, when the images and maps clearly indicate a home 650 feet away from the proposed building site, with eight doors and a patio open facing that home. That family, although renters, needs to matter. They need your consideration, too. We need to know who bears responsibility, not only for the business, but the agricultural use of the property. We need to know that there will be someone to monitor the property during events, as well as when it is not being rented. If it is built, the only recourse my neighbors and I have is law enforcement. And with every call, every complaint for noise, speeding, property damage, the property value of my home and every home in our neighborhood decreases, and insurance rates go up. And a vet center, as it's been presented, brings no benefits to me or my neighbors, no financial gain, no services, no employment. There's no significant increase to the tax to the county, yet police, fire, and utilities are provided. There seems to be no avenue to determine the impact on the water table that every family in our community depends upon. If that is depleted, bringing municipal water out to our community will be an extraordinary cost to the county, as well as every family along the line. Not everyone, perhaps very few, can afford the $10,000 to $15,000 that will take for each home to connect to a water supply. We can document that cost and our other concerns. Can the answers be documented? We ask the Commission to take these questions to heart, because the answers affect our lives. You have received at least 17 of those 25 communications in opposition to this application. If any evidence can be provided of how this will provide a benefit to us with limited impact, we would gladly welcome the venture. We thank the Commission for the time, and sincerely hope that you will listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Alrighty. We will then close the citizen comment portion. Pardon me?
Do you have a second?
Yes, you may.
Those citizen comments were listed items on the agendas this evening, but there may be other people who are here to speak on other items that aren't on the agenda. So the citizen comment portion would certainly be available to anybody else who would like to speak on any item that is not subject to a public hearing later this evening.
I thought we had been through that, Mike, but that's...
I think we went through the citizen comments and gave folks that related to specific agenda items the opportunity to speak. However, again, there may be people who are speaking on anything that may not be on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
My fearless leader has shared with me that there may be others in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding anything other than what we've talked about. Is there anyone who would like to do that? If you will come forward, please, and give us your name and majesterial district.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you. My name is Sherri Riley, and my husband and I live at 207 Montgomery Circle in Stevens City. I recently brought to the DRC Committee a request to allow backyard chickens in RP District. After two meetings, the decision was made from that committee not to move it out of committee and advance it to zoning. I would like an opportunity to ask you to consider hearing this request in front of your committee and advance it to a public hearing. It's been brought to my attention that there, the reason that they did not want to advance it was because of extra work for their staff, and that there's 84% of RA District in our community, and 16 of that is RP. And currently, 17 of those are HOA governed. So that would, in my opinion, limit the amount of workload for the staff in regards to that. With parameters put in place that I have submitted in regards to lot size, the number of chickens that you could have, I feel like this would not make a big workload for staff. Of course, there's a lot of benefits to having chickens, and I, people know that, and I'm not gonna go into that, because I just feel like it hasn't been given a fair shot on hearing those benefits and having even a pilot program, where I would love to be the recipient of that, to see exactly what those issues might be. I have the support from several veterinarians, from animal control, and it's been my understanding that there's been very little issues with backyard chickens and complaints in our community thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us regarding something else? Anyone at all? Alright, we will close the citizen comment portion, and thank you for the guidance. Okay, well, we are now about to get into the agenda, and I would like to share with you. Let me get to it. There are minutes from, did we do the minutes? We did, didn't we? Okay. The first item is a public hearing item record and request. Rezoning 04-17 for Carball Business Center, submitted by Stowe Engineering PLC, to rezon two parcels of land. The total, 107.21 acres, from the RA Rural Areas District to the M1 Light Industrial District with proffers. The site has an address of 831 Shady Elm Road, Route 651, and is located on the eastern side of Shady Elm Road, approximately 1.11 miles southwest of the intersection of Shady Elm Road and Apple Valley Road, Route 652. The eastern portion of the site is bounded by the CSX Railroad. The properties are identified by property identification numbers 74A68 and 74A69, and are located within the Bat Creek Majestial District. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. As you stated, this is a rezoning application for two parcels of land that total a little over 107 acres. They are proposing to rezone the property from the RA Rural Areas District to the M1 Light Industrial District with proffers. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, we have the location map for the property. So the subject property is outlined in black. You have Shady Elm Road, and you have the railroad that runs along the back of the property. Now, the properties are located within the limits of the Sewer Water Service Area and are also within the limits of the Kernstown Area Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Now, the Kernstown Area Plan identifies the property with an industrial land use designation as outlined in the Shady Elm Economic Development Area. The Comprehensive Plan, I would note, also calls for the extension of a new major collector roadway, which is called Renaissance Drive. And this is the land use from the Kernstown Area Plan, shows future land use. That blue area is future industrial or existing industrial. Now, with this request, the applicant has proffered a number of things. First, they have proffered to participate in the cost of transportation improvements in the nearby area, up to a maximum of $1,080,000. They are dedicating right-of-way for Shady Elm Road and Renaissance Drive. There's a limitation of the number of new entrances on Renaissance, which is no more than two entrances. They have proffered to provide screening for the loading docks from Shady Elm Road. There is a prohibition of individual business signs on Shady Elm. They have proffered to do an intensive-level survey of the Henry Carball House prior to its demolition, and they have also proffered a monetary contribution to fire and rescue in the amount of $30,000. Now, this is the proffered generalized development plan. At the top of the screen, you can see where Shady Elm Road runs along the frontage, Renaissance Drive around the front, the CSX Railroad along the rear. Now, this kind of, I'll call it periwinkle color along here, that's the right-of-way dedications that are proffered. And then this is, wrong button. This green area is the screening along Shady Elm, where they've proffered a specific type of screening, which is a full-screen Category C buffer, includes a berm, as well as the landscaping. And then this is the entrance to Renaissance. And this just shows the overall layout of how Renaissance plays into the transportation network of the property to address the impacts caused by the development. Again, you have Shady Elm, and in this location, you have Route 11, and this is how Renaissance Drive will connect from Shady Elm to Route 11. Now, with that, following the public hearing, we are requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this request. I would be glad to answer any questions. We have Mr. John Bishop here, if you have specific transportation-related questions. And Mr. Tim Stowe is here on behalf of the application. Thank you.
Any questions of Mrs. Perkins at this point? Any?
Yep.
Yep.
Candace, could you speak, the transportation, the nearby, you said nearby improvements on the transportation for the $1,080,000? I know that's right-of-way, but what else do we get? That's issues with Shady Elm Road in the past, so...
I'll step aside and defer to Mr. Bishop.
John Bishop, transportation. Specifically, should I pass it, Candace? Should I pass it again, Candace? A project map? There it is. Specifically, we're talking about Renaissance Drive. If you notice on the screen to your left, you'll see the portion that's in blue dash between Shady Elm Road and Route 11. That's the portion we've already completed in partnership with Bowman-Shoemaker Companies. The next phase of the project is the piece that's shown in yellow. That includes a bridge over the railroad tracks and connection all the way to Shady Elm Road. As you review your packet, you'll see, even in the applicant's TIA, that this project is frankly critical to making sure that their traffic works.
So there will be no other improvements into Shady Elm, and I guess we're not having traffic, truck traffic, or whatever traffic we do, M1, you have truck traffic?
There's proffered right-of-way for future widening of Shady Elm, but in terms of specific improvements to Shady Elm to accommodate their traffic, no, the focus is on Renaissance Drive.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for Mr. Bishop? Alrighty. This, I would like to ask Mr. Stowe if he'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairwoman. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the application. My name's Tim Stowe. I'm Stowe Engineering. There are a few benefits of this project that I feel are something I wanted to articulate and just highlight as I go forward, and I shall be brief. The project builds on the work that this Commission did over a two-and-a-half-year period, when you updated the Comprehensive Plan and you also worked on the Kernstown Area Plan. There was good work, there was hard work, lots of public involvement culminated in public hearings with the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. So we've taken that and moved forward with it, with this rezoning request. The transportation items that Mr. Bishop mentioned a moment ago are gonna be critical to that area. The construction and completion of Renaissance Drive from Shady Elm is gonna take a lot of pressure off of Apple Valley Road and its intersection with Route 11. And if you have about an hour to spare one day, I would encourage you to go out there and experience it for yourself about 4:30 or 5 o'clock. The property is also rail-accessible, and as you know, there aren't a lot of properties in the county that are industrial that are rail-accessible, so we think that's very important as well. As far as Shady Elm Road, we're actually providing an additional 60 feet of right-of-way along Shady Elm Road. There's about 40 out there now. We're gonna provide an additional 60 feet to satisfy the requirements of the Comprehensive Plan to improve Shady Elm Road at some point in the future. And that would also include a multi-use trail along Shady Elm Road for the residents out there who desire to use it, as well as any others who desire to use it. We've proffered interparcial connectors, so all of our connections, our entrances, as Ms. Perkins mentioned, would be onto Renaissance Drive. All the traffic would go to Renaissance Drive. We've also taken steps to protect the neighbors. We realize that folks live across the street on Shady Elm, that they have families there, and they don't particularly want to be disrupted. So the proffers that we've put forward do call for the screening, and Ms. Perkins described that to you, but that would be a Category C buffer with the full screening, including the berm and the landscaping that's required in that screening. We would also not have any signs on Shady Elm Road. The signs would be over on Renaissance Drive for what we're doing. And I do have, just to give you a sense of what that might look like, oh, I really did it that time, didn't I? We cut a section along Shady Elm Road, this is about halfway down the property, to give you a sense where you can get, just to get a sense of the scale of where Shady Elm Road is, and this would be looking north, where the 60-foot right-of-way would be, the berm with the landscaping, and then how we envision grading the property and where a building might go on the property. There's about 65 feet of fall from Shady Elm Road on the high side down to the low side, where the railroad tracks are, so there's a lot of fall on the property. So we know there's gonna be some grading, and that's gonna affect, and we think benefit folks on Shady Elm Road as far as visibility and what we're doing down there. That's all I have. I intended to be brief, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Stowe?
I've got a question about the screening for the people on the east side of Shady Elm Road at the 957-983 Shady Elm Road. Will they benefit from that berm and screening?
Mr. Mold, what we've proffered is to do the berm and the screening along Shady Elm when there's residents on the opposite side. For those, there's some to the south of the property there, and we still have the Category C buffer that we're required to do by code. We don't have an option there. So we could either go in with the distance buffer, or one of the other options with either the full screen or anything. There's three options there that range up to several hundred feet. So we wanted to leave those options open, but we have not defined what we're doing at that end.
Just wanted to see that they get some screening as well.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes?
Madam Chairman? Mr. Stowe, out of the proffer fire and rescue, we have $30,000, I think, was sent in, but I thought I'd read somewhere where we bumped that up. In the past, President's been, we, five cents per square foot, and I think I seen somewhere where it's a million square feet. Did we bump that up in here, or is it still at 30,000? I thought I'd seen where additional 20,000 was gonna be applied to that fire and rescue proffer. Did I read that wrong somewhere? Could've been. I read a lot here in the past few days, so...
Not familiar with that, sir.
Okay.
I think I saw the same thing.
Saw it, yeah.
Did you? I thought I did, too.
Not yet.
Okay.
Rezoning applications that we've seen in the past for commercial-industrial have proffered five cents to 10 cents per building square foot. It is up to the applicant to determine what they want to bring forward, so...
Okay.
So to clarify, it's a $30,000 proffer?
Yeah, so if they do a million square feet, it's about three cents per building square foot with this application.
I don't know if I agree with that at this point, but I don't know where we go from here. That's the...
Anyone else?
I'll let staff handle that, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, anyone else for Mr. Stowe? Anyone?
Madam Chairman, the discussion is over. I'd like to make a motion that we approve...
Sir?
We have a public hearing.
We have a public hearing. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to this application? Yes, sir. Come on up and give us your name and majesterial district.
My name's Kevin Anderson. I live in the Bat Creek Majestial District. I live adjacent to the Carball property, but talk about the rezoning. Nobody has talked about the safety standpoint of this. With the new construction on the American Woodmark Building, we've seen a significant increase in construction truck traffic, dump trucks, tractor-trailers on this road... increase in construction truck traffic, dump trucks, tractor-trailers on this road. And I don't know how familiar you are with Springdale and Shady Elm, but just Monday, we had four tractor-trailers go out towards Springdale to go to Route 11. And we've got school buses traveling this road with kids, and that road's not built for construction vehicles and tractor-trailers. And our fear is this is going to increase the chances of accident with school buses and the construction vehicles on Springdale with these trucks trying to take a shortcut.
Hear you.
And I don't think that's been considered in this whole plan about how that's going to impact our kids on these school buses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to us? Yes, sir?
My name is Glenn Moore. I live in the community which is adjacent to the Carbar property. I am severely concerned about Springdale Road. Springdale Road is an extremely windy road. Feel that the safety is very poor there. The road is so windy, tractor-trailers get hung up on the road crossing. I know Renaissance Road is designed to circumvent that, but there's still going to be a certain amount of employees that are going to be heading out through Springdale Road. I really do feel that some sort of consideration should be that only the entrance be brought in on Renaissance Road. I don't, there's really, I didn't see any kind of information, you know, where their entrance is going to be to serve this property, you know, for their building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, would you come up and give us your name and magisterial district, please?
Yes, Darla Parsons Barrett. I'm in the Stonewall. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I was listening to this, and I heard the $30,000 proffer for fire and rescue. It concerns me, only in the fact that I volunteer with the Clearbook Department, and I know that we get a lot of calls because of the Target Plaza buildings and the Mopar buildings and the other business district we have down there with a lot of false alarms and sprinkler issues and certain other things that is continual. And 30,000 won't buy even one engine, to be perfectly honest. And I think as a good business partner to the community, you'd want to look at helping a little bit more to continual fire and rescue support in that area. Which Clearbook would not support, but kind of look out for all of it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding this rezoning? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any thoughts on the part of the commission? And specifically, I would like to ask our applicant some of these questions about the construction vehicles. Does others chime in?
Well, I would just say I agree with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Moore, because I used to live out there, and Springdale Road is tricky, especially when you meet someone coming the other way. When you get down close to the mill, it's just bad. I will say, my understanding is that with the bridge crossing, the CSX of Renaissance Drive, there's a possibility of the railroad crossing getting closed on Springdale. Mr. Bishop may be able to speak to that more. I know that was a plan at one point, and that would eliminate a lot of the traffic that goes through there, because there just aren't that many people that live between the railroad tracks and Route 11. That would help considerably. The fire and rescue proffer, I understand. I would say we're investing over $1 million in Renaissance Drive to make emergency access to this area much easier, much faster for emergency vehicles to be able to get to the residents, to be able to get to the businesses and the area in general. And we think that is a significant contribution to help with the fire and rescue needs that may occur in the area. With that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you may have.
Anybody have another question for him?
Mr. Stowe, this property, it's been in comprehensive plan for light industrial for quite a while, hasn't it?
It has been considered. Years ago, it was considered for the FBI facility. It's been considered for a lot of different things for many years. This 2035 comprehensive plan update codified all that and moved the Sewer and Water Service area line and put it all into place.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Bishop.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stowe.
John, just with regard to Springdale, first of all, I thought I saw you shaking your head about the closing of the railroad crossing, so is that suggesting that's not a possibility?
That's correct. With the project as it is currently scoped, we're talking about a bridge which actually saves us from having to close crossings, including the Springdale Road crossing. Mr. Stowe's correct, we have discussed that in the past when we were just discussing an at-grade crossing for Renaissance Drive, because with CSX, that's getting a new at-grade crossing is a big negotiation, frankly. I would agree that trucks should not be on Springdale Road, however, as a public street, I don't have a lot of automatic control over that. Perhaps a truck restriction could be sought in the future or something like that.
That kind of leads to my next question. Once Renaissance is in place, you know, what's the likelihood of at least getting a three-truck restriction or something that would help, at least with enforcement?
I can never speak for VDOT since it's theirs to approve. However, based on what I know about the program, that would be feasible to achieve.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other comments about Commissioners?
Don't bring it to their attention. I'll just add one more comment on the fire and rescue. All right. No, that's, I'm probably getting up there, but on October 4th, there was a letter, and it's in our packet, that they said that the applicant agreed to increase the amount by $20,000. I didn't think I was going nuts and I was going to fit on through this, but the monetary amount, so it says the applicant has increased the proffered amount by $20,000. So did it get increased to 50,000, or is it still at 30?
30 to 10.
Oh.
Okay. That's where I guess it came, because all I seen was the 30. So they're, okay. Just for clarification, I just wanted to make sure.
Everybody okay?
Mr. Marston, we did, went crazy. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other thoughts?
Can I do it? I'd like to recommend that we approve rezoning number 04-D17 for the Carbar Business Center.
We recommend that the Board of Supervisors do that. Okay, small difference. Okay.
Second.
The second. Any other comments? Mr. Moulden?
Moulden, yes.
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 Trippett, yes.
Moulden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Fine, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And the chair votes, yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of December. Thank you. Our next public hearing is an ordinance amendment to the county code. It's regarding Article 2 supplementary use regulations, parking buffers and regulations for specific uses, Part 203, buffers and landscaping, Paragraph 165-203-02. And this is a revision to the Frederick County ordinance to modify the requirements for residential separation buffers in the RP Residential Performance District. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to Chapter 165 of our zoning ordinance to modify the requirements for residential separation buffers in our RP Residential Performance zoning district. Residential separation buffers are required to adequately buffer different housing types from dissimilar housing types within adjacent separate developments. The intent of this request is to provide flexibility for smaller infill-type lots, ensuring that the desired housing types and densities envisioned in our long-range land use plan are realized. Staff has drafted a revision to the zoning ordinance, specifically the residential separation buffer matrix, to modify the required buffer between different housing types, specifically between single-family detached units and townhome units, and between single-family small lots, attached and detached units, and townhome units. This amendment would change the required buffer category from a category B-type buffer to a category A-type buffer. A quick comparison, for example purposes, a category A-type buffer, which includes a full-screen, which would include a landscape screen plus a six-foot-tall fence, wall, mound or berm, would require 25 feet of separation. That would include a 15-foot inactive portion of the buffer and a 10-foot active portion of the buffer. By comparison, a category B-type buffer of the equivalence full-screen, which again is a landscape screen and a six-foot-tall fence, wall, mound or berm, would require a 50-foot separation. Again, 30 feet of inactive distance and 20 feet of active distance. You're effectively, for a full-screen, cutting the buffer requirement in half as far as separation distance. The full-screen requirement would, of course, be maintained. Our Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this amendment at length at their April, May, July and August meetings of this year. The Development Review and Regulations Committee agreed with the proposed changes. The Planning Commission discussed this item on September 20th, and you all did agree with the proposed changes. Following discussion on October 11th, the Board of Supervisors forwarded this item for a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward this item to the Board of Supervisors for further consideration. I'm happy to speak to any questions you may have regarding this item.
Yes. Questions of Mr. Klein? Anyone? Anyone? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this change in the supplementary use regulations? Anyone at all? Will? Didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Patrick Sowers of Dave Holiday Construction. I was one of the applicants that prompted the proposed text amendment, and just as kind of a quick background on what we have here, this is not just next to, between, say, townhomes and single-family detached dwellings on, say, a 10, 12, 15,000 square foot lot. This also applies to single-family small lot housing. And I think it's important to note that because, as Tyler pointed out, single-family small lot housing can be either detached, which is on a lot as small as 3,750 square feet, or attached, which essentially is a duplex on a 3,750 square foot lot. The way the ordinance is structured currently, if you have single-family small lot, say, attached units, a duplex project, and you have an adjoining property and you want to develop townhomes, the way the ordinance currently reads, even though that's a fairly similar housing type, you'd have to treat those single-family small lots as if they're detached homes and provide a full category B buffer. We've dealt with one property where the adjoining project has, is an existing duplex project that actually has a platted, recorded 100-foot buffer on that adjoining property, but because the way the matrix is set up in the zoning ordinance, you kind of have to ignore that existing buffer or the existing platted buffer and look at it in a vacuum, just on your side of the property line. There's no opportunities for shared buffers or any things like that, which there are opportunities for those when you're looking at zoning district buffers, which are different than the ordinance. But essentially, we're trying to right-size buffers rather than take land in the UDA and use it up for, in this case, it'd be 150-foot separation between duplexes and townhomes. You're kind of using valuable land in the UDA where you want to focus that growth per the comprehensive policy plan. So that was one of the things that prompted us to move forward with requesting the zoning or the residential separation buffer amendment. But with that, we're supportive of the proposal. We think it's kind of streamlined. Like we said, we're looking at it as a right-sizing the buffer. It's a good way to integrate housing types rather than trying to separate them when you're looking to focus future growth in the UDA. But thank you for the time, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding this change? Well, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, this was one that we hustled with DRC, as you well know. I don't know if everyone was in agreement even with the final result. It's one of those that kept getting new life when we thought we had it down. It kept coming back and it reworked it, so of the lesser of all things, I think this is where we're at with it, regardless of some of us agree with it or not, but this is where we're at. So it's just my two cents from the DRC.
Any other comments? Shall we make a motion? Would you like to?
Madam Chair, I don't even have it in front of me. I'll make a motion to approve. Do you have that? Let me go back here, I'll go back real quick.
I've got it right. Sorry, I'm not on the scene.
Sorry for this. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance to modify the required residential buffers in the RP zoning currently, and as it was presented to us tonight.
Second.
Mr. Marston?
Marston, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, no.
Kenny, no. Moulden, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moulden, yes.
And the chair votes, yes. This also will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of December. Our next item is an action item, and its conditional use permit is 07-17 for Caroline Dixie Shuland submitted for construction of a special events facility. The property is located at 283 Barracks Lane, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 52-A-261 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'll keep it brief on the summary of the item, and I'll focus my attention on the new portions that have changed since the public hearing on September 20th. I also, again, want to recognize the public comments. We have received them, and we do acknowledge them. A quick overview of your site. This 138-acre piece of property is located south of Route 50, south of Round Hill Road, southwest and west of Woodchuck Lane, and it is near the old Round Hill Fire Station. The applicant, Ms. Dixie Shuland, is proposing a 5,000-square-foot special events center. In regards to this item, the red lines depict the distance of those, of the proposed buildings from the adjacent property lines. She is also seeking to provide permanent restroom facilities, a prep kitchen, storage, a bridal salon/ suite, a concrete patio and gazebo. The anticipated occupancy is up to 280 persons, but staff would like to reiterate again that the actual occupancy of the building will be determined at the time of the site plan, depending on the applicant's ultimate final configuration of the building not to exceed 5,000 square feet, and the ultimate classification of the facility by the county's building official. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on September 20th, and the action that took place that day was to table discussion of this for another 30 days, bringing this to November 1st. Staff has worked extensively with the applicant to address three areas of concern that were expressed by the Planning Commission through new additional conditions of approval. That includes traffic, access and safety, noise and sight lighting. If I may walk you through, following the Planning Commission's public hearing, staff sought additional comments from the Virginia Department of Transportation's Land Development Division regarding the proposed entrance on Barracks Lane. Barracks Lane is a private driveway on the applicant's property which connects to the state roadway network. VDOT reaffirmed their commitment to Barracks Lane as the proposed point of access. My apologies for the technology issues. Okay. Again, VDOT reaffirmed that Barracks Lane is the proposed point of access on the property. The second point of access that the applicant has on their property is through the old Round Hill Fire Station. VDOT confirmed in their correspondence on October the 11th that this is not a preferred point of access to the property, in that it crosses an unsignalized railroad intersection and provides limited lines of sight onto Round Hill Road. Staff further considered two additional points of access since the Planning Commission's public hearing. The first is Cather Lane. Cather Lane is a state-maintained roadway. Unlike Woodchuck Lane, it is of minimal width, it is unpaved, and it requires an unsignalized railroad crossing. In addition, the applicant has not been able, in staff's research, we have not been able to determine if there is a private access easement from the applicant's property to the state-maintained portion of Cather Lane, nor is there a kind of private agreement between the property owners for use of this access. Further, it's been proposed to utilize a piece of private property owned by an adjacent landowner to connect directly to Round Hill Road. While this may be a viable option, it, again, would require, under our zoning ordinance, for a recorded deed of easement for use, or written permission from the adjacent property owner for the applicant to use it for their intended use. Again, the zoning ordinance, under the supplemental use regulations for special event facilities, requires that for private access easements with another property owner or owners, the applicant must show that the easement allows for this type of use, in this case, a special event center, or written permission must be attained by the sharing parties. Additional VDOT comments were, again, provided on October the 11th from the VDOT Land Development Division, which reaffirmed Barracks Lane as the preferred point of access to the property for the special event center. In addressing traffic, access, and safety, staff has included two additional conditions of approval. The first is that access to the site shall be provided by Woodchuck Lane via Barracks Lane, which is the private internal access drive, and that the applicant shall relocate the Barracks Lane orientation on their own property to ensure that the access drive to the event center is not immediately adjacent to the southern property boundary of parcel 52-A-28A. The diagram included in your staff report depicts how we envision this, where the driveway would go straight back and not wrap around the adjacent residence. Further, in the future, should the owner of the subject property be able to secure private access to Cather Lane, Round Hill Road, or Woodchuck Lane through a recorded deed of easement or other written consent from the property owner, a new conditional use permit would not otherwise be required to implement such access. In regards to noise, the Planning Commission raised concerns regarding music and other types of noise on adjacent properties and residences. In addition to the conditions that were included in the original staff report, staff has added a new condition, which requires all outdoor music shall be concluded by 9:00 p.m., and music may continue indoors until the conclusion of the event. In regards to staff lighting, site, my apologies, in regards to sight lighting, the Planning Commission raised concern regarding the spillage of light and glare onto adjacent properties, roadways, and residences. Staff has further provided a condition that all lighting should be downcast to avoid glare onto adjacent properties and residences. Again, the conditions of approval remain unchanged, less the four conditions that have been added, and those are highlighted here in yellow. And staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward this item to the Board of Supervisors for further consideration. I'm happy to speak to any questions you may have, and the applicant, sorry, applicants also have a few remarks prepared. Thank you.
Questions to Mr. Klein?
I have a question. You mentioned a prep kitchen, and it's not on the print or the design. And the Health Department has an issue if, with the septic system, if there's any food waste?
Correct. There won't be, there won't be a commercial kitchen like you would get at a restaurant or that other type of use. It's really a kitchen for just warmers, for the catering company to use. The Health Department did approve the septic system that the applicant's proposing, and I'll let them speak to those, the other concerns that were raised regarding water and septic on the site.
Tyler, just explain the CUP process again. Does it stay with the applicant if the land sells, or does that, stay with the land?
Conditional use permits do run with the land, so in the case that the applicant sells it, it would, the CUP would transfer with the title of the land.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I saw one place that it was supposed to stop at 12, and then the other said to the end of the event. So that was a new in the yellow.
There were, I'll go back to the condition that you're referring to. It concluded was, events shall start no earlier than 10:00 a.m., and all event-related activities shall conclude by midnight. The additional condition that we added was specific to outdoor music, which would restrict outdoor music to conclude by 9:00 p.m., and that the music may continue indoors until the conclusion of event, otherwise midnight. But that midnight deadline is not only the conclusion of the event, but the dispersment of vehicles and traffic away from the center and the cleanup of the event and all those things that go along with it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
One more question. Do we regard this, and this may not be something you can answer, Mr. Klein, since this is in the agritourism, it's in that, what we're calling our rural, is this a commercial building for, under, constructing, because we've had comments from the Building Department, or does this fall under agricultural, where there's really not too much?
It's not an agricultural building, where they would be granted agricultural exemption under the statewide building code. It is, depending on the ultimate organization of the building, it may be considered a commercial building or an assembly-type use, like a dance hall or banquet halls. It depends on the building official's ultimate classification of the building. That will ultimately determine the occupancy, not to exceed 280. She will be required, under the conditions, to submit a full engineered site plan to the county for review, and also will be required to get building permits, so she'll fall under the statewide building code, and she can speak to some of the aspects of construction in regards to her building.
Okay. It's just, it's just, we're kind of blending. It seems like a commercial aspect into what we're, our agritourism and our ag side of things. So I guess we blended this commercial type of application into that? Is that?
It's an agribusiness or agritourism-type use. It's not an agricultural use in that it's exempt from the building code, but it falls under the definition, our definition, which was amended back in May, of agritourism and agribusiness.
Thank you.
Yes.
In the meeting that we had on September the 20th, there was some discussion that some people would prefer this particular event center rather than a subdivision there. You know, playing the subdivision of that property. But it's not an and/or. It is, in fact, both. They can have the event center, and at some point, they still can.
You are correct, and I'll let the applicant speak to their future plans for use of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Mr. Klein, what other, let's, let's say this, this use wasn't established. What other types of uses under the current zoning district could be established that could have a comparable attendance or impacts on a surrounding community?
Under the byright uses for the RA Rural Area Zoning District, again, subdivisions, they could have five-acre lots, farm wineries, farm breweries, churches, you know, those type of large gathering-type events would fall under byright use.
So those would just be site, site plan approval? No CUP?
Those type of uses would require just an illustrative sketch, which is slightly less technical and less detailed than a site plan.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I guess it begs the question, and then, maybe this is for the open comment portion of it, but it seems like that would be, you know, we would have that in place before we're here with this. I mean, we're here with a CUP for something that, we seem to be the cart before the horse here, but, so, we can do some byright things there that they can do on their own, they wouldn't have to go through the site plan process, we're all familiar with that, and they could then, then have the events in these structures. They could have this type of event in those structures. Is that correct? They could have a wedding reception in their winery, in their, or their farm market.
You are correct, because that falls under an accessory use for a farm winery or farm brewery.
Okay, that's what I was.
You are correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Everybody okay? Thank you. Would the applicant like to address this, please?
I'm Bob, with Back Creek District, and my daughter is trying to do everything the best way she can as far as trying to figure out how to do it without just going agriculture and doing it the way she, I guess we could, by rights. But I am a farmer. I did plant grass in there, and I did bushhog at once. Our cash flow is not good enough for me to do everything I want to in one year, so fence probably next year if everything goes good, and that was, it is in, in grass, and I'd say I have probably about an 85% stand, so there's some spots in there. I don't want to do anything to it right now because it's a seeding clover, so I wanted that to dry out, and then I might bushhog it, and it might help reseed some of the weak spots, but, and I think I'm only supposed to talk about agriculture, but I do think this building would be probably lower impact than anything I can think. I know the traffic is, is not something anybody wants, and we don't want to upset people, but it's usually such a fast thing, they're in and they're out usually. But I guess that's all I'm supposed to say. Thank you all for putting up, I imagine you've had more noise than you want.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm back. Dixie Shuland from the Back Creek District. Not the quite, not quite the same fame and adoration I felt last night in my Elsa costume with my two toddler daughters, but it is about what I anticipated with the neighbors and everything coming today, and you can't blame them for wanting to protect what they've had and what they hold their allegiance to. But also, for the same reasons with the toddler daughters, I'm feeling honored to have this opportunity to talk uninterrupted, so here I am. Again, obviously here for the event center proposal. Like I said, I'd have to kind of just ask, why would the neighbors be in favor? Why would you want this? Have to kind of follow it up with the, that this is a necessary evil for our family. This is what we need to sustain in agriculture. Emphasis on the fact that we think that we're bringing this to the table with minimal impact. It's only twice a week for the surrounding homes. To reiterate, it's 138-acre buffer to the event center, and we thought we were being pretty considerate, picking the very, like, the very back portion of the property that is very isolated. Our hope is to mitigate the cost of the mortgage and maintain agriculture in this Woodchuck Lane community. I reached out to every adjacent neighbor with letters, also tried to stop at their houses, if available, and kind of talk with them a little bit more about the process and everything. This business plan was not designed to cause havoc and disrupt everybody's day-to-day lives, and with confidence, I can say it will not. I discussed with the neighbors, I found them to be very reasonable and understanding, and seemed to prefer this to a lot of the alternatives when I got to sit down and talk with them. I emphasized I'd like to keep the communication open, and they all have my cellphone, and I provided my email address, as well as our address and everything, and I, one of the deficits I felt was just kind of the neighbors weren't familiar with the CUP process and didn't really have a good understanding of why it's out there and how it ensures public safety, and it allows them this opportunity to put forth their input. I was actually very pleasantly surprised by a lot of the responses, and actually surprised to find that some were actually in favor. Some said I'm all for it, one said, actually mentioned his brother-in-law did the same exact thing in Obrana, Maryland, so, and it kind of saved their family farm. I do find it to be better than a subdivision, in my biased opinion, and I found a lot of neighbors also mentioned the fact, and they even said, quote-unquote, "I figured I didn't have the whole picture." They did have a meeting regarding this proposal. I'm kind of astonished that I didn't, within the past 24 hours, I only had one neighbor in addition to Mr. Keplinger reach out to me despite providing all these means of communication. There's been a lot of speculation and hearsay with kind of some of the details, the number of people, which days of the week, and those kind of things, and this communication has, still is, and will always be remaining open to these neighbors. And I sound like the past presidential election, but it's just kind of like the fact-checks. You want to get the facts. A lot of the things aren't mentioned even today. I just wish they had reached out and made that simple phone call that we have provided and kind of inquired. I think we could have answered a lot of these questions pretty easily over the phone. So again, I just want to reiterate the fact that we really, we do want the neighbor's support, and we'll need it for this event kind of moving forward. I did provide the slide, similar to the one Tyler did, with the numbers and the distances, and I think those are all just kind of numbers out there, but to compare it, the 3,600 feet is nearly 12 football fields, 2,300 is eight football fields, fast forward, 1,300 feet is 4.6 football fields. So we're talking a pretty significant distance from all the neighbors, and for those reasons, we did pick the very back part of the property, which is probably actually not the ideal location when you're looking at a 30-foot gravel road. So we, a lot of our considerations were with the neighbors in mind when going forward with this, with this conditional use permit. That being said, there's kind of a common theme. It seemed like a lot of the neighbors that should have been concerned towards the actual event center and the back and the adjacent farms, and the most, the back end of those houses were actually not the ones that were most concerned, and it seemed like a lot of the people communicating tonight and in letters were actually, when you first pulled in the road, those were the ones that had a lot of the concerns with the traffic. So I think that's one of our biggest concerns tonight, and just again, we even had some comments all the way down Singhouse Road, and that was 3,300 feet, and, I mean, that's farther than kind of us walking out these doors and going to southern states, so that's a pretty significant distance. Five of these back lots, just for kind of demographic purposes, are actually rentals. Three of the houses, one of the owners is totally in favor, one of the other owners is opposed, but the, I believe both of the, at least, both of the renters were in favor. One was very in favor, so, for whatever that's worth. And then in the, in the Woodchuck Heights, it's kind of this first strand of houses, just kind of reiterated to them when I was able to meet with them, that we're looking at literally probably a 30-minute span of time, likely twice a week, because I would imagine in the later hours when the, you know, the events are closing up, they'll most likely be asleep, so. I did ask the neighbors, I kind of looked for a straightforward answer regarding one of the proposed entrances into this facility. I said, would you really want to have a road on either side of you and be sandwiched in between the houses? I volunteered my phone number. Nobody would actually objectively tell me, yes, that is their preference. Most wanted to, you know, seek their husband or wife's input before answering that question. It, it most kind of said, you know, I just, I never really looked at it that way, for whatever that's worth. And I also found that that set of neighbors can all agree, prior to this event center, prior to yesterday, it has a history of speeding. There is, traffic safety is currently an issue. It isn't necessarily, you know, it can worsen and those kind of things, but as I sat there and talking to one neighbor, we watched four cars exceed 40 miles an hour just going in that little stretch, so. As much as I can entirely relate with these small children and those kind of things in the street, I think right now, you're not talking about necessarily the safest street that I would really prefer my kids to be playing on, so. And in talking to one of those neighbors, they mentioned that there was one other house with small children, so I'm thinking there's two houses with small children. Give some leniency to that, maybe three. There is a common theme, nobody wants the entrance. If you read through the letters, there's a letter from the Cathers mentioning that they did not want to have it down Cather Lane, that was a big concern of Mrs. Cather. As Mr. Klein mentioned earlier, we would need her approval for this, so the fact that she wrote a letter in and that was one of her concerns, kind of in my opinion, rules that out as an option. We also had some neighbors near the Round Hill Road access also kind of say that they don't want it right there. The most straightforward and objective and kind of the entrance that makes sense to kind of move forward with this process is the one off Barracks Lane. We have explored other avenues. We have agreed as a family, we're not forfeiting any of our property for this kind of compromise, so we, you know, one of the ideas we kind of had is we could, you know, fund like a privacy fence and add some shrubbery or trees or those kind of things to make minimal impact to... impact to Mr. Keplinger's house where I knew he was concerned about his bedroom and the lights and those kinds of things. So, and again, as Mr. Klein mentioned, kind of coming straightforward into the property versus the curvature right there. So, so aside from that, kind of the other complaints that we've had with the application are kind of the general complaints that you would have with any kind of event center, any kind of commercial type thing with a lot of people. Again, it can't reiterate it enough. We want to keep the communication open. We want to have neighbors calling us. We want to have them texting us, emailing us, whatever, at any hour of the day. If there's a concern, we want to hear it then, there. We don't want it brewing. We want to be, you know, open. We want the neighbors to be with us and support us because this is not going to succeed without them. One of the complaints was the well water, the groundwater. And I guess the biggest thing to kind of reiterate is we have had the septic evaluation and we are limited on the weekly capacity of this event center. So that kind of answers to a lot of the questions because there were some speculations with it being seven days a week. There's some speculations about, you know, using up the wells and everything, but that answers to a lot of those questions because we are not able to have a high-capacity event seven days a week. It's not going to be possible because we do not have the commercial kitchen. The well permit has been reviewed and approved by the Health Department and it meets all the required setbacks. A representative from the Virginia Department of Health's Office of Drinking Water made a site visit with the engineers and they also approved the well location. Regulations actually don't require any setbacks, setback distance from well to well, but this actual proposed well is several hundred feet away from any of the neighboring existing wells. It's primarily going to be used during the weekends, so it won't be used for a majority of the weekend. Since there is no commercial kitchen, your water use is primarily just going to be used from the restrooms and the possibility of off-site, and mostly it's going to be off-site caterers, so you're not talking a lot of water in terms of the kitchen. I'm going to have my mom kind of address some of the other kind of event center type complaints because she's, as you know, is more familiar with the actual things with her experience with Cloverdale Barn. But just to kind of finish up so she can conclude the, kind of, the, our respect from the conditional use permit. This is a hay field, not a golf course. This is why it's not mowed, just to kind of reiterate that. And I can't wait for this opportunity to bring the public to a working farm and we can provide education. And of course, my dad will be a source as well when the time comes. Just kind of a reminder, $16,000 in seed he spent this year. A fence would cost about $35,000. We want this farm to be self-sustaining. We want it to kind of try to provide for its own mortgage. We want things to work. We want to see it thrive. This is kind of one of our business plans to get to that end result. Alternatively, I kind of asked the neighbors and those kinds of things and they didn't come up with much. GoFundMe website, I don't know. But the expansion will depend on the success of this event center. Currently, my dad has 300 cattle, 100 sheep and farms nearly 1,600 acres all by himself. It's a pretty, this is, this caliber of a one-man operation is almost unheard of. So let's all work together and make this farm thrive. For the economic impact of agritourism, just some quick facts for whatever they're worth is the, I, one more point I want to make is quite honestly, there's not any large Frederick County farmers that are thriving right now without some element of agritourism. I've said that to many people and not been granted any exceptions that we weren't able to kind of clarify that. So with, so we would like to also kind of use the public in our favor and be able to thrive. In terms of these agritourism throughout the state, some of the latest and greatest from Virginia Tech is, they found that only 17% of the money that was brought was actually spent on the actual venue. 83% was spent outside the venue, such as florists, DJs, photographers, caterers and wedding planners. Some other facts in there and whatnot. We have found about 70% of our Cloverdale Barn weddings are from outside of this community. So it is straight tourism money that's brought in. More than one-third of agritourism establishments in Virginia have been in operation for less than five years, which is a testament to the recent growth of the sector. So again, and just kind of in conclusion, our family's ability to farm depends on the approval of this event center. We want to, we want to be good neighbors and we know we cannot succeed without their support. We do not expect this change to be welcomed with open arms, but we know that we can prove to you that this will have minimal impact. I mean, thank everybody for their time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claire Boyd and I'm Back Creek District. There are several points that I want to address and one is supervision on site. Not only do, will there be staff when needed, but we've always been managing our operations ourselves. As mentioned, my husband runs a farm. I run the barn. I think this year, out of all the weddings I've had, I've missed two. And my assistant is fully qualified. Matter of fact, has received herself great reviews. So we plan to supervise completely and we also will do whatever we can to make sure that alcohol is not a problem. Of course, at every event you have, whether it's a family event or whether it's a wedding, you're always worried about that. I will say I've been very impressed with the standards that all the weddings at our barn have been. Not at all what I was concerned myself as some are about too much drinking. Many have actually brought in buses from the River Rafting Place, the trolley from Candy Hill, I think Frederick County School Bus somehow they were able. There are all sorts of options. People are very concerned as I can understand the officer with the Frederick County Department, they are very concerned about that. Who wants to ruin a wedding by having a horrific accident? So I think that in itself has been addressed by most. The waste and trash, we were surprised when we first came. It was in January when we bought the property and the amount of trash that was out there, it is kind of flat property. All the fence lines pretty much covered in trash. We did kind of have to prioritize. We did remove a lot of it. I think had about $5,000 worth of dumpster trash that we took out of there. We do plan ourselves, again, to scan the area. Part of the thing that we take pride in is that we do a lot of the work ourselves. So what other people might overlook if they're just getting paid a wage, we actually handle and take pride that we pick it up, whether it's a cigarette butt, plastic bottle top, whatever it is, we pick it up. And we, we plan to do that. And we do, again, would hope you would let us know. I think that's how the supervision question came in, is people thought that they would need to call us. We just want to be able to pick it up immediately. The other addition, big concern was the sound. And I realize that has different things. I actually was, drove by that wedding that you, was brought up earlier and it was a tent wedding. Most will tell you that any type of enclosure, kind of like you're, you're sitting in a car in the summer and your window's down and the guy pulls up next to you with his radio blaring, you roll up your window and most of it goes. This is going to be enclosed sound mostly. There will probably be music for the ceremonies. As mentioned, there's conditional use restrictions on that. About half my weddings have some sort of music for the ceremony part is, I'm sure you're not surprised to hear. The other thing that you should keep in mind is the distance that has been pointed out on this is significant. If, if my barn, Cloverdale Barn, was a big sound problem, you would have all Stone Brook, Orchard View Estates, Windsor Lane and probably even the people over on Tavistock calling you and saying there's a problem. Those places are closer. The most the neighbors that have indicated a problem or concern about it. Generally enclosed sound, and the barn isn't totally enclosed, unlike the planned event center will be enclosed. So there should be a big difference right there. But we haven't, in the six years or six seasons we've done this, we have had no complaints from any of those areas. Kind of keep in mind too, I've been to a lot of venues, kind of in my research and doing this. Raspberry Plains over in Leesburg is right in the middle of a subdivision, similar to Whittier Acres. There's White Hall, which is right down in Blumott, right over the mountain. Plus there's another one there, I can't think of the name. There's of course Barnes Rose Hill, right in the center of Berryville. And then there's Rosemont, also kind of the outskirts of Berryville, right next to the subdivision right there. And then kind of one of the big surprise, of course, is the little Quaker town of Waterford, which is almost like a mini Williamsburg over in Loudon. They have an event center right there in the center of town and that area resisted even having cable TV. So even in places that have been very conservative have sought these type of venues as a way of kind of expanding their tax base. Can't think of too much else to add. Last thing, I guess, one comment about Regallo. We came up with the name Regallo because it is the acronym for first initial of all of our grandchildren. So we have Rosalie, we have Ellie Caitlin, make sure I get it all right, I might need help. We have Gwendolyn and then we have Annabelle and then we have Liza and then we have Olivia. So it had nothing to do with being a big party place, except that we do think of this as being a gift to our grandchildren, something that they can come to and be a part of. So I do want to thank the planning department and of course, the committee for all the time that you've spent on this issue and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions that the commissioners would like to ask any further?
I'll just go back to Mr. Klein again. This, we, the CUP, it transfers with the land if this event is sold. Have we had, and what constitutes a CUP being negated in the county? Have we had, do we have a certain amount of?
Good question.
Criteria for that?
I may, I may let Mike, Mike speak to that, but as far as it being negated, if we found that a CUP was in violation of any or all of their conditions, we could revoke the CUP. Generally, we try to work with applicants and owners to try to resolve issues before it gets to that point. That is a tool at our disposal to enforce the conditions. As far as the site plan, once you submit the site plan, we will look for conformance with all of these criteria or conditions that are included as part of this application as part of the site plan approval. So again, it's something that progressively builds on as we go through the development process. And Mike, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, probably the most important thing is with a revocation of a conditional use permit, obviously the conditions guide how the operation runs. But the revocation occurs back through the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, if there are significant complaints about an operation, would have the ability to revoke it again through their process. So obviously the conditional use permit approval and the conditions that guide the operation are very, very important. And if they're of course not followed, then it ultimately falls to the Board of Supervisors to revoke the conditional use permit.
Could I put you on the spot and define significant?
I think it's pretty obvious that hours of operation and things of that nature, we try to make the conditions as clear as possible. It's very clear also what has been presented to how the property would be used, you know, so the exhibits that you see, as Tyler mentioned, the site plan that will be approved. All of the review agencies that were provided will need to be followed. So we would see that they would be followed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone?
Can you make any other comments? This is one that's, it's, and I understand our agritourism. I understand where we're, where we're trying to go with this. I was part of the DRC that created this ordinance. But I do have consternation when we, when Ms. Shalene says that, you know, she did talk to people, it's in agreement, they just haven't come forward. We have quite a bit of correspondence and every one of them has been a negative response. They just have not seen and not relayed that to us that says we are for this. When we look at it, agritourism as we, we envisioned it, and you could go in there by right. You could go in there right now and put up a barn. You could go in there and do your winery. You could put horse stalls, whatever in there and then have this event in there. You would not even have to go through a site plan process. You could just go in there by right and do that. I would not know why that would not be a viable option for you instead of the conditional use permit application we're going through. I can't, in my, just not convinced that there's farming taking place there. I grew up on a farm and everybody know how you're seeding clover, Mr. Boyd, and I really respect what you're doing there. But when we're trying to support that, it just doesn't have the feel to me that that's a farming operation that's being supported. It seems like this land was obtained for the sole purpose of creating this event center. And it's kind of getting it behind. We, you know, we, you, you people met, the Boyd's met with us at DRC with Cloverdale. You know, we worked through that, got how that was to set up. But this is just seem like it's a backwards thing. You know, it, it just is not in my, it just doesn't seem like it's the right fit for this. And we, you know, when you have as many people and have the neighbors that you have there, it just makes me hard to support this moving forward. I just, it just doesn't seem like it's a, it's, we're supporting agritourism instead of seeming like we're creating a commercial operation on some agricultural land. And that's, I just have a difficult time with that.
What else?
Madam Chairman, I have some different thoughts as to what he's saying. I do believe that with all sincerity, the Boyd's do plan to operate as a production farm on this land, what acreage they can do. Now we got to remember that they just purchased this land and that field was just established in grass. So you're not going to see a whole lot of activity. I do know, as Bobby, Mr. Boyd stated, eventually they were planting cattle on this land. I sincerely believe that is a fact. And I also sincerely believe that they do want to do right by the neighbors. From what I talk, when I've talked to staff, they say that Dixie has been over backwards to try to address all the concerns of these, of the neighbors. And there's a lot of concerns and I agree with that. But Dixie and the Boyd's, they have some rights also in this whole situation. Now I've read emails to my eyes got bloodshot and I, and I can sympathize with some of these concerns. But I do believe that we came back and we tried to address the major concerns with restrictions. And so if you don't have any further discussion, I'm ready to make a motion on this, but it didn't, you know, you, you don't have any further discussion.
Any other comments? Any, any other thoughts?
Well, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We're in the middle and either way I go, somebody's not going to like me and I understand that. But I'm going to make a motion that we move this on to the supervisors. This, this CUP 07-17 for Dixie Shuland for the special events facility.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the CUP. Is there any other conversation that we should have? Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Moulden, yes.
Kenny, no.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of December. All right. The next item that we have is an action item also. It's the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various counties. I think we'll just wait a little bit.
That was a little inappropriate.
Okay. The CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies, and the plan is created as an informational component of the 2035 comprehensive plan. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a public meeting, as stated, for the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. I would note that the Planning Commission previously held a public hearing for this item at your September 6 meeting, and it was tabled for 45 days. So tonight, we're bringing this back before the Planning Commission. We are seeking affirmation that the projects within the plan are in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I would note that this is scheduled for a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors meeting on December 13. So the CIP is an advisor document that is updated annually. With each cycle, projects are removed from the plan as they are completed or as priorities change. It is intended for use as a capital facilities planning document, not for requesting funding allocations. Now, I would note that the monetary amounts shown within the plan before you were compiled from December 2016 to January 2017. Some of these figures may have changed over the time. I would note that updated figures are currently being gathered that will be processed with the next CIP cycle, the 2018-2023 CIP. However, in order to get this format moved forward and current, a current document adopted, we have been directed to take this to the Board of Supervisors meeting. So with that, we are seeking affirmation that the CIP is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Mrs. Perkins? Well, I think we need to discuss a motion. Would anyone like to make it?
Need a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adopt the CIP and move it forward, as was presented by Ms. Perkins.
Second. Second.
Mr. Marston?
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Molden, yes.
Chirpitt, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also will go to the board on the 13th of December. Let's see. We have an information item, and that's Master Development Plan 05-17 for Abrams Chase, submitted by painter Lewis PLC on behalf of Abrams Chase. This application is to develop 3.24 acres of land-zoned RP, residential performance, with 13 age-related single-family units. The subject properties are located on Cincinnati Road, Route 657, 500 feet west of the intersection with Channing Drive and the Shawnee Majestial District, and are identified by the property identification numbers 65-A-27A and 65-A-28A. And please note that this is for informational purposes only. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is a master development plan proposal to develop 3.25 acres of land-zoned RP residential performance district into 13 single-family detached, age-restricted units. The master development plan also includes 0.64 acres of right-of-way improvements along the frontage with Cincinnati Road. The applicant is also seeking a waiver of the requirement for a community center. The property is located west of Channing Drive and north of Cincinnati Road. Here's an overview of the site. Subject properties that comprise the 3.25 acres are highlighted in black. You have Cincinnati Road along the southern property frontage, Channing Drive immediately to the west, and it's immediately adjacent to Parkwood Circle. The properties were originally rezoned back in 2007 with rezoning application 11-06, which took 3.25 acres from our RA Rural Area Zoning District and rezoned them to RP, residential performance. The properties were, again, modified through a rezoning application in 2015 as part of rezoning 0415, and this modified the proffers to restrict the number of units to age-restricted and subsequently reduce the monetary contributions for proffered improvements because they are age-restricted units. Access to the site will be provided via Cincinnati Road, and future interparcels access is provided to the west. A turnaround is also provided for residents. Sidewalks will be included on either side of the internal street for pedestrian connectivity within the development, and the applicant is also proffered to provide a 10-foot trail along the property frontage with Cincinnati Road. The right-of-way for the future condition of Cincinnati Road as a four-lane roadway is also being reserved. Here's the master development plan. Again, you have your central access drive here with a turnaround. You have your future interparcels connection to the east, and then you have your future reservation for Cincinnati Road along the frontage. The applicant, as part of this application, is also seeking a waiver of the community center requirement, as the proposed subdivision contains less than 25 lots, and as such, the applicant is able to provide an equivalent to recreational value within the development. They're proffered to provide a gazebo outdoor picnic shelter and some internal green space for use by the residents. The master development plan for Abrams Chase is generally consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and this master development plan is in conformance with the approved proffers and generalized development plan approved with rezoning 11-06. Staff is seeking a recommendation from this Planning Commission on the request of a waiver for the community center to forward to the Board of Supervisors, and the master development plan is, again, provided for information. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Klein?
I will add, the applicant is here this evening if he'd like to make any comments as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, women, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Stuart Butler, and I'm with Harvest Communities, the owners of the property. John Lewis was going to be here tonight, but he was called away at the last minute. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions to Mr. Butler? Any? Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I, let's see, Tyler, we need to do the waiver. And we understand what that is, and that is upon the board's request for a waiver of the community center requirement to forward to the Board of Supervisors. And that's the only action that we will take. The rest of it will go on with this. So do we think that that's a good thing?
Yeah. With reference to Master Development Plan 05-17 Abrams Chase, I recommend a waiver of the community center requirement.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Chirpitt, yes.
Molden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And the chair votes yes also. It goes to the board on November the 8th. I think we're down to the end of, about the end of our agenda.
We have a letter for a public hearing that we can come here and talk about this. Our property is going to be affected by this in the future. So do we not get a chance to speak this evening, or is it a waste of time to come here for two hours and sit and not be able to speak?
Madam Chairman, of course, this is not subject to a public hearing. It's just a public meeting, and what we did is provide an additional opportunity with some good direction earlier this evening for anybody who had items and wanted to speak under citizen comments to do so. So again, this is not a public meeting item.
Y'all didn't even notify us of this in the first place. We didn't know that this was going to happen. This is the first we've even heard about. You guys need to get more policies in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to where we were. The, we have our annual review of the bylaws and roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission, and Mr. Ruddy will take care of this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll be quite brief. We provided you with the bylaws and the roles and responsibilities about a month ago. Got a couple of responses back saying everything that was okay, so we appreciate that. The chairman and I did notice that there was one tabling word in there, which we changed last year, of course, to postpone, and so we'll make sure that that is clarified and, of course, the final things as we move forward. But unless the Planning Commission has anything else to add, we will continue with the information the same as it has been leading up to this point.
Do we like that?
We like it.
Yes, absolutely.
Of you who volunteered to take a look at these. I appreciate your help. I think we're at the end of our agenda. Any other things on your mind? No?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Are you opposed?
Thank you.